Good evening. Today is Thursday, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and welcome to the regular meeting session of the Milford School Committee. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded by Milford TV and copies can be obtained at the request of this board or through central office. So good to see everybody tonight. Our first agenda item will be the approval of minutes, and we have two minutes. The first one is from January fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, for our regular meeting. Any discussion on that? So looking to entertain, a motion to accept those minutes. Motion by Matt, second by Megan, then all in favor, and that is unanimous. Great. Second set of minutes is from January sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, and this was our Saturday budget meeting. Motion by Matt to accept?
Nope.
Oh, sorry?
Not yet.
Yes?
I'm gonna test your memories.
Uh-oh.
One of the last pages of the minutes, athletics department, expenses related to sanding, rebranding floors. We discussed including the auditorium in there. Was that part of the vote?
No.
That's exactly what I did. I said, "We talked about it," but I don't remember.
We did definitely talk about it. You know, I can check with Melissa on that.
Okay.
If you wanna, if you wanna hold on that till the next meeting?
Yeah, let's just hold on.
I can get that question answered. Do you wanna send that in the email?
Yes.
Please, thank you.
Sure.
And there was a revision also.
Is that what's on the back half of this?
Yeah. It was listed as PCBA.
Yeah.
She wanted BC. It was actually a DCA BA. It was listing it.
Okay.
This is, this is the absurd world we live in.
Exactly.
But it's an important distinction.
Yes, exactly. All right. So, yeah, what was attached here was a revision, correct, Craig?
Yeah.
Of that?
Yeah.
But it sounds like there might be an additional revision, so again, Matt, you're looking to probably pass this over based on that kinda?
Yeah, I would like to double check that.
Yeah.
I have a question. Do you know where that is? I see it. Expense initiatives, sanding, rebranding. It's like the last.
Correct. And no one else recalls that. All right, so we'll just pass that over, and we'll bring it up at the next meeting in a couple weeks.
If you copy Melissa on that, too, we'll get that covered.
Okay.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
No problem. All right, pass it over. So, second agenda item then will be announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Any committee members? Seventy announcements, correspondence, distributions. Not seen?
So I've got, I've got three. It's, it's registration season again, and we're sending this information out kind of repeatedly over the next week or so. The Shining Star two thousand and twenty-four registration packet pickup for returning students is scheduled for Monday, February twelfth, at the Shining Star front office located at thirty-one West Fountain Street in Milford, at the side of the high school, which is door nineteen A. The pickup time is from six PM to seven PM, and then registration packet pickup for new students is scheduled for Tuesday, February thirteenth, again at the Shining Star office. And again, the pickup time is six to seven PM on the thirteenth. Now, kindergarten registration is also upon us. The packet pickup will take place on Monday, February fifth. The snow date is Tuesday, February sixth, and this takes place in the Milford High School cafeteria, and, which is at the rear of the high school, from six to seven PM. A parent or guardian will be required to complete the first page of the packet at the time of pickup. If a language other than English is spoken in the home, we will call you for a future language screening appointment. Portuguese and Spanish translators will be available at the event. And then, this is, this is the most important piece. Please remember, children must be five years old, honor before August thirty-first, to attend kindergarten next year. The last piece is part of the strategic planning process. We're hoping, we're gonna host focus groups of parents and guardians for the purpose of receiving feedback for the development of the next Milford Public Schools strategic plan. Focus groups will take place on the evening of February twelfth at six PM, and focus groups will be held in English, Spanish, and Portuguese, and please contact Melissa Bullock if you have interest, and that email's going out tomorrow to the, all the parents and guardians across the, the school district. And those are my, I think, I think I said four, but it's actually three.
Three. Sounds good. Thank you for that. Really appreciate that.
No problem.
Darth, can you give us a little update on the artwork in the building? I know you're multitasking, so.
That's okay. On our wall today, we have some new artwork from our sixth-grade students at Stacy Middle School. They don't have much other information on it. Looks like some watercolors. I'm particularly drawn to the birch trees.
Yes. Thank you. We appreciate the, the artwork and bringing it to our, our venue here to be able to display. Moving on to invitation to speak. Not seeing anybody in the gallery from an invitation to speak. From that, I'm just gonna do one quick maneuver here, just the chairman update. I'm gonna put that just before our ELL program update. Just one chairman update, and that is just, again, announcing the opening on the Milford TV Board of Directors. So, again, we're looking for a representative to represent this board once a month at the, for Milford TV. It's, you know, I've done it. I know Michael has done it. Not, not a lot of heavy lifting with the role, but it is something important overall for the community in just looking, looking at what they do for programming and overseeing their budget. So, you know, the hope is that we can find a community member to represent this board and be a part of the board for Milford TV. So, if you are interested, reach out to myself, Chris Wilson. It's Cwilson@milfordma.com, or the superintendent's office. We'll be happy to provide any more information or answer any questions. So, thank you for that. And based on the information we get, hopefully, on the, kinda the, we'll collect information up to February second, and with the hopes to appoint someone around that February eighth meeting, or have people, and have individuals recommend. All right. So, moving on to our ELL program department update. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Yeah, thanks for having me. So, I'm gonna go over some data with you and use a lot of acronyms. If at any time I'm using an acronym that you're not familiar with, please pause, like, have me pause so I can explain it. But I'm mostly going to be using our term L, English learner, FEL, former English learner, and our FLNE, which is our first language, not English, which none of them are synonymous. All right, thanks, Craig. I'll be going over data with you. I'm gonna go over it in a little bit of a faster pace, but again, at any point you want me to pause and give you more information on that data, please let me know. I wanna spend most of our time talking to you about what we're doing day in, day out, and not necessarily the numbers, and, and the great work that we're doing here in Milford around our assessment data, our dual-language programming planning, our tier-focused monitoring, and then our multilingual parent advisory council, and then just give you some updates of highlights that have happened since the last time we've met. So, from last year to this year, we are growing. Thanks, Craig. And specifically, you can see that each school, obviously, you'll see that Shining Star, and, and in blue, is up and down every year, and that particularly is because the majority of our students who are, are multilingual students who are attending Shining Star is also because they're duly identified as students with disabilities, and so that changes every year, and so that's why that number is, like, up and down. But as far as all the other schools in, in the district, in our district as well, you can see that there has been an increase. I do wanna point out the yellow and the red, and you'll say, "Whoa, why is Brookside have such an increase, and why does it look like Memorial has gone down a little bit by, you know, point four percent?" That's because we did that, we did rezoning last year, right? Because there was the expansion of Brookside Elementary School, of the classrooms, and so I wanted to just point out, because of the student streets that were zoned originally from Memorial and moved over to Brookside, we are now seeing equal representation in percentage-wise across both schools, which was one of the outcomes for the rezoning. So, that we've been successful in that, in that.
And that couldn't have worked out any better. I'm gonna knock on wood, because, you know, anything could change in the next couple of years, but for the last couple of years, it's worked out exactly as we had hoped.
I have a question.
Of course, yes.
Jen, sorry. Is it right to think that Stacy, Woodland, and the high school would then mirror Brookside and Memorial's numbers, because those are our younger students, or they will become former ELs by the time they get there? Like, how do you think about that?
Correct. So, according to research of English language acquisition, it takes five to seven years for students to master a language. Our state has decided, the Department of Education, Office of Language Acquisition, has decided six years. So, we have six years to reclassify a student, or they become coded as a long-term L. And so, we are reclassifying the majority of our students in those five to six years, and that's why you see a drastic decrease, like, from Woodland to Stacy, right?
I know we've had an increase, like, for example, at the high school of ELs, which may, was unexpected.
Mm-hmm.
Versus?
When we have a different, when we see a larger percentage nationally of immigration increase.
Got it.
Many of those students tend to be high school students because they're immigrating independently. Maybe some of them being unaccompanied minors or rejoining their family members that may have left them with relatives in their native country, and so at that time, most of our new students outside of kindergarten are coming in at an older age where they can immigrate independently.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Craig. And then, this is where we get down to proficiency levels. So, majority, as you can see, six hundred and fifty-four of our students, current students, which is over half of our students, are at an English language proficiency level one. That means the majority of our students in our program are coming in or at a foundational proficiency level, which requires different services than our students who are at a transitioning level, all the way at the end, at four, right? I also gave you the breakdown data of where those level-one students are to Meg's question earlier. If you look at Brookside Memorial, you're gonna see a larger percentage of our English language proficiency-one students at the K-two level, because those are students who are in their first three years of being immersed in the English language. And then you will see this, the next highest level-one is at Milford High School, due to the immigration influx that we've just spoke about. Unfortunately, those are in alphabetical order, not by grade level, so that's just how the program worked that I was using. Thanks, Craig. I wanna just remind that our, our state has used the, the number of four-point-two on a one-point-oh, six-point-oh scale for reclassification criteria. We do use that four-point-two criteria to reclassify our students. So, any students who make that criteria in May, when we get our scores, they are reclassified. Because we can monitor them for four years, and it's our legal compliance to monitor them for four years, you can see that last year, we reclassified a hundred and thirty-two students, which is great. The previous year is not so much, because we were coming off of COVID. When students were not immersed in an environment of English and were still in their home setting, we did, our students didn't progress in their English language proficiency as rapidly as they do if they're in the English setting in the schools, and so we're starting to catch back up with our pre-COVID data reclassifications. One thing that you'll notice this year from last year is that our, you know, our Portuguese home languages are, is still our largest percentage after English and then our Spanish, but we're increasing in our Haitian Creole family population. And so, I just wanted to highlight that. And this, our FEL, our L and FEL population equals just close to two thousand students, and that's how many students our L teachers oversee through explicit English language development and monitoring with their SEI classroom teachers. This breakdown is just from year to year. You can see how many English learners we've had from year to year, plus the percentage, and plus our first language, not English, and just to, to do the comparison. So, right now, we're at one-third of our total student population is designated as an English learner, and over fifty percent are first language, not English. Same slide, but just a visual representation. Thanks, Craig. This is where I think it's important for us to see, like, yes, our district is at fifty-two-point-six percent first language, not English, but when you look at our percentages at Brookside Memorial and Woodland, they're at fifty-seven, fifty-eight percent, and they will be moving up. Their first language not being English does not change, and so over, our overall district first language, not English, will increase, and I predict it to increase next year until those students at Brookside Middle, Brookside Memorial and Woodland make their way through the high school. We'll, we'll continue to see an increase. And this is how we compare to the state, right? So, what you can see for, specifically what I'm here to speak to, is our first language, not English, and our English learner student population is more, or double or more than double than the state's averages, right? And one thing that I wanna point out, and I'll speak to later about our highlights of our translation and interpretation department, is one of, one out of every two families needs an interpreter or translated documents. As far as our English learner students with disabilities, I think it's really important that you here, that I think we're doing a really great job, particularly with my partnership with Lucy Jenkins, our special education director. Her and I meet consistently to talk about our duly identified students and how we can best meet the needs of our, needs, their needs, because they're just so unique. They're not just learning, you know, content and, like, you know, they're also, they're juggling three aspects, and sometimes four around, like, you know, maybe some trauma or immigration or newly assimilated to the community. But right now, that last, that third bullet is really what I'd like to pay attention to. Like, two hundred and seventy-two students of our eight hundred and seventeen identified students on an active IEP are also English learners, which is a thirty-three-point-three percent, which is consistent with our thirty-three-point-four percent of our overall student population. So, when we're looking at that, students with disabilities, we should be equitable to those percentages, so that we're making sure we're, we're not over-representing or under-representing our English learners and, and maybe falsely labeling them as a student with disability. And I think with, there's obviously areas that we still need to grow, but I think that we're doing a really good job. This composite level at the bottom is our students who are in sub-separate programming. They don't, they're not scored the same way on their proficiency levels, and so, right now, I just wanted to provide you where they're at as well in, in their language proficiency, proficiency growth. Thanks, Craig. And this is where I wanna, like, celebrate, and, and also in appreciation for our school committee's support, because I do think that we have a really strong program, and that has been because our community has supported the position in programming that we have here in Milford Public Schools. Of our ten comparable districts, according to DESI's DART data, is we are performing at the highest. So, Milford Public Schools has the highest percentage of Ls making progress. We're at forty-eight percent across our eleven similar districts. We're hoping to do that again this year, right? Which means, right now, we're in the middle of our testing window. It started on January fourth, it ends on February sixteenth, and we are testing one thousand five hundred and four students, because we do not test our pre-K students. Here's where I'm really, really thankful. The school committee last year approved an assistant director for multilingual learners in dual-language programming, and we've been able to, her name is Julia Latino, and we've been able to launch our planning for dual-language programming. We have a team at Memorial. Memorial has been chosen to hold the dual-language program, and we have a design team, which includes the principal, assistant principal, our EL coordinator, our supervisor of mathematics, our curriculum supervisor of literacy, myself and Craig, and we meet monthly in order to complete the DESI modules on the dual-language programming. We also are talking this coming spring about how our dual-language programming will include high, uh, curriculum hiring and the lottery and registration process for kindergarten, not now, that Dr. McIntyre explained is coming up, but for next school year. And, but really being thoughtful on who we're hiring this year, because we have a few retirements at Memorial Elementary School, and how can we replace those retirements with our bilingual staff for this program. We are also doing site visits in partnership with Massachusetts Association for Bilingual Education, which is MAABE Association. We've partnered with them and are able to do some site visits across Rhode Island and Massachusetts to see dual-language programming in action. We are attending quarterly meetings with MAABE and professional development as part of, part of our partnership with them. And then, in addition, we have funded through Title III an outside consultant to work with our assistant director to help guide us on the application process, that we will have to submit an application for final approval to the Department of Education by November first. We plan to do that at the end of October. Thanks, Craig. Some additional pieces is this summer, and it was just confirmed that on June twentieth and twenty-first, we will be participating in La Sembra, which is a retreat for the administrative team and the EL department to really build what our dual-language programming. We have to do that this summer, because budget for November, it will come very quickly, and we'll need to put forward on, like, how we're gonna be, what curriculum and what resources we may need for our dual-language classrooms. And then, moving forward, we are going to, in May two thousand and twenty-four, we're required, we will want to, but we're also required to present new programs to our multilingual parent advisory council. We'll be doing that in May, fielding any of their questions, and then we'll, we will go full force to a community information camp, campaign, because we're first supposed to tweak with our multilingual parent advisory council and then have our outside communication. And I think that's all I would like to share about dual-language programming until you have questions. At the end, maybe? No? Okay. All right. Cool. Oh, yes. All right. So, this is, I, I did also want you to see that right now, when we apply in November, there are many dual-language programs across the state, and, and obviously, those MAABE and other associations that endorse bilingual education, they wanna see a K-12 program. We're committing here in Milford to a K, a K-six program in our application, because we're thinking that at the seventh grade, seventh grade, we can roll this into our world language program. And we'll know more, but it's easier to commit to less and expand later than, you know, apply for the whole twelve, I mean, thirteen-year education plan. So, that means in fall of two thousand and twenty-five, we will roll out with two classrooms. The way that we are going to introduce in Milford Public Schools is a fifty-fifty model. Half the day, the students will be taught in Spanish. Half the day, the students will be taught in English, which means we can have a full bilingual Spanish-speaking teacher, and we can have the second teacher, the partner teacher, a monolingual English speaker, and so the students can switch between the two classrooms. So, we'll start with two K, but then the following year, we'll bring in new two, two K. Those move over up to the fir, up to first grade, and obviously, all the way up. We're looking at moving it into the middle school and sixth grade for its, its final year and fall of two thousand and thirty-one. And then here comes, like, the not fun part. Right now, our English language education program has their tiered focus monitoring. We had our whole self-assessment last year, which was very grueling, and a lot of paperwork and a lot of self-assessment that we needed to complete. We were asked to complete additional action items. We committed, we submitted them all by their October due date. Then they said that they will be visiting us on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, and Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, for two full days. During those two days, they will complete classroom observations within the EL classrooms and SEI classrooms. They will have interviews with every single principal and director, the teachers that they observe, the interpretation and translation coordinator. They have a focus group with parents and guardians. They also have a focus group with our MPAC, Steering Committee. After the site visit, they will report their findings, and I'm, I'm now going through, this will be the third tier-focused monitoring as the director here in Milford Public Schools, and we will always be, we have always been, and we probably always will be given action items, because there's always room to grow. And then that brings me to our MPAC. Last year, I got to tell you that we were really moving forward with our MPAC, which was really excited about. We have seven parents on our steering committee, four with a home language of Portuguese, and three with a home language of Spanish. We meet intermittently between our annually scheduled, because they plan the meetings, right? So, and then I'm there, because I help facilitate interpretation between the two, the two, the two languages. And so, in our first meeting, we explored drug use prevention in our schools. We had a panel where we had our school resource officer, principals, Dr. McIntyre sat on it, and really spoke to answering their, their concerns about drugs and the possibility of drugs in school and in the community, and how they can approach that as parents. This past, last week, in January, we had a conversation about restorative practices and, and discipline, and the varying ways that discipline happens in their country, and then here, and, and like, where we can bridge, and where, where we can bridge some disconnections. And so, we are actually in the process of getting all of the meeting notes together and sharing them out. In March, we have a school committee open forum. I sent an email to the, to the school committee, asking if you would like to be a participant. Thank you for those of you who are volunteering to be there. If you, if you have not had an opportunity to respond and you still want to come, please, please do so. It's, it's open door. And then on the fifteenth, as I said earlier, we'll be introducing our dual-language program. We also have in our school district, which isn't a requirement from the state, but I just really think that it's important if schools, if, if districts have district improvement plans and schools have school improvement plans, I want my L department to have an L department improvement plan. And so, it's linked in here for you guys to see. It is, it's open, but our key goals this year is we're really looking at our progress monitoring, not just waiting for our summative assessments of access annually, but how are we tracking their progress throughout the year, so that we can ensure our students are, are making their targets. We're looking at, how does that look like for our English learners with disabilities, specifically our students in sub-separate programs? We're looking at vertical alignment of our FEL, our EL reclassification ceremony, and how can we make that be like a, a really big celebration in our community? And then, we're starting at our grades one, two, for our ELD curriculum enhancements and alignment to our new stand, frame, WITA frameworks, and we will move that up as we go each year, but you'll see just in grade one, two this year. And then, our, we have goals listed around our MPAC. And then, highlights. So, I just wanna give a shout-out to our Family Resource Center. They are, they just go over and beyond, and I feel like our families really have a, a hub to come to in the family resource to seek assistance or to, to ask any questions that they have. And I'm sure you know as well, and you've probably talked about here before, that they have actually been super busy this year, specifically welcoming our newly arrived families from the Emergency Assistant Family Shelter Program of Massachusetts. And they're just so kind, just so kind and willing to do, go over and beyond. So, but you probably also saw my proposal, and we, we do need some more family, like, outreach assistance. I was able to switch some of our Title III funds, amend a grant, like, cancel some other programming and amend a grant, and we just did hire a Haitian Creole-speaking family liaison, paid through our Title III, and she's amazing, and she just started last Thursday. So, we have welcomed her to our Family Resource Center. And then, I've been working hand-in-hand with Carrie Taylor, our curriculum supervisor of mathematics, and doing a lot of work with our IM implementation around how are we making it language accessible? And so, we did a lot of that work last year at the K-five. After they launched, once they knew the program, we made some modifications to it and enhancements, and then we're gonna be doing that this summer with the six to eight, since, since they've had a year under their belt, like, looking at it, and then we'll be putting in all of the enhancements this summer. We were awarded a DESI grant-funded through Boston College. They have a three-course bilingual education certificate for teach, it's our third year getting it, and this year, we have four, two administrators, myself and Julia Latino, who's the assistant director, and two teachers in the certificate program. And so, we'll be done with that in June, and so we'll all be dual-language certified. And then, I wanted to just highlight some of the department shifts. We have over, close to sixty percent Ls at our K-two level, and so all of our, all of our teaching is co-teaching at this point. And so, I, I just wanna say a thank you to our teachers who have just, like, learned to partner together and really collaborate in the best interest and shared interest of our students. And, and so our programming has changed across each of the schools as our populations grow, and I just, I think all of our principals and our teachers have been trying to grow at the same rate, and And, and that, that's, that's the area that is of tension, trying to grow at the same rate as our, as our student population grows. But I think we're doing a, a really great job. But I'm biased, so. Thank you Craig for helping with the slides.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation and all of the effort that goes into to track and present all that information. I'll open it up to the committee for questions. Just go ahead and fire away because it's gonna be easier with a small group.
I have a few, I'm sorry, Dan. So on the dual language program, like, oh my gosh, like I wish I could take my son back to kindergarten because I remember when it was just a concept, like I wanna tear up when I think they were doing this, it's amazing. Could you just clarify for me, it sounds like we've committed to Spanish. Should we evaluate between Spanish and Portuguese? I'm just curious.
So, did we evaluate between the two? I would say yes, in regards to, we really looked at what's out there. We contacted other districts like Brockton and we visited Brockton in the spring. We went to Framingham in the spring. We saw programs and the feedback that we were getting, like the qualitative like survey focus group feedback was like implementing Brazilian Portuguese dual language programs are really difficult because we don't have comparable curriculum.
Got it.
And so mostly across the United States, everything is available in Spanish. IM comes in Spanish. I Ready comes in Spanish. Many of the programs we're already using come in Spanish. To implement dual language programming in Brazilian Portuguese or Portuguese, Portugal Portuguese, we would have to internally create everything.
Got it.
And we just don't have the capacity, nor do I, when I, maybe something you, you know a little bit about me is like when I, when I commit to something, I want it done well. And I wanna be able to look to parents in the eyes and say, we're gonna provide your child the best education. And I think self-creating something as, like building the plane while like you're flying it, i- is not a really strong foundation. And so I've held that to the side, but I do not, but I do agree that in May, when we bring this to MPAC and say we're starting with Spanish, there will be push, like not, not pushback, but there will be questioning from the community and saying, well, what, I, I really want my child to, to become literate in Portuguese.
Okay, that's helpful. And then this is maybe a naive question, is the EL population eligible for that program?
Yes, so what happens is, what we're hoping is to start both kindergarten classes at eight, at 22. Eleven of those students being fluent English speakers and 11 of those students being fluent Spanish speakers.
Wow.
Same in the other class, 11 and 11.
Okay.
And so they both have complete role models. And half of the day, they're both learning from each other, right? Because half of the day is gonna be in English and half of the day is gonna be in Spanish.
That's really cool. Okay, thank you, that's great. You spoke about some roles that you were requesting, I think in terms of outreach. Could you just clarify those positions?
Yeah, we, we, Lucy and I partnered in requesting two, two additional interpreters and translators this year, specifically.
We didn't get to that yet in the process.
I just, I thought you mentioned the word outreach and I wasn't sure how they were labeled. So I just wanted to make sure I was aware of where they sat on our list. So that's, that's great, thank you. And then budget question, because I think you mentioned it a few times in terms of, right, obviously we've needed a ton of, you know, town and community support for all these positions to support all these students. Could you just speak a little bit to how you kind of align with the admins as they move EL requests forward for their building? Because we see that with, your department has some initiatives and then buildings have initiatives. And it would just help us to understand kind of like collaboration that exists or does, just kinda how that works?
Yeah, the way that I have been informed, or I feel I have been informed, is that all the, all of the new initiatives that fall in, under the Family Resource Center, which I oversee the Family Resource Center, would be on my budget. Anything that would be a district-wide EL, EL, like last year I put in for assistant director for multilingual learners in dual language would be in my budget. If it's at a building-based level, then the principal puts that under their budget. It used to be like we both did and then it got confusing and then, so we end up putting them just under their school. And when they're under the school, each principal will meet with me and we'll discuss that.
And you kind of navigate together, these are the needs.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Thanks Chris.
No problem. Matt or Brendan, any questions on that department?
Just a comment, amazing, like I mean, looking at the graph of how the influx of students have entered this district. I mean, I think it's a thousand change over nine years is massive. So, that's amazing, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. It helps to love what you do.
Now I'll just comment similarly to Megan's on the dual language. I think that's really exciting. I have a kindergarten who's, who's lucky to have a teacher who speaks Spanish and English and she's, knows more Spanish words than I do. She's taking instruction we learned in Spanish at times and it's really cool to see that. And that's not even a program set up yet, so I think that's gonna have a, a huge benefit for everybody when that actually gets rolling. So that's very exciting, certainly.
Thank you.
It kinda speaks to that, my, my question was gonna be, when you look at from the special education side, there's like kinda push-in and pull-out services. I'm assuming EL service is kinda sim, is it similar? Where you have push-in services and pull-out services?
We do not pull students from L, we do not pull students.
Okay.
At K-five. Everything is either push-in, embedded ELD or co-teaching.
So yeah, which speaks to the, the next comment of the less restrictive learning environment, right?
Yeah, that and also to be honest, that you've probably already heard, there is no room to pull.
Yeah.
So.
That's, that's news to us. Never heard of this.
Well, and, and it sounds like too, which is nice, is, is that push-in kinda speaks to the dual language program that we've always wanted and, and Matt's, you know, one of his daughters is, is kinda representing that by coming home and, and learning Spanish within the classroom setting because of that, how that program is structured and how that, that push-in service is there. So kinda was, is nice to see. When we say to, just going back down to the, the 48% that are making progress, are they still, the other 52%, are they still on track to, to be a FEL after the six years? Or is that, do they kinda push off and need an extra year or two of?
So.
Service?
There's a lot of things going on. This I feel like is a, a, a little bit of a philosophical question because we put six-year-olds on a computer with a headset and we ask them to talk back and forth with like an avatar. And that's how they're graded for their speaking. We ask them to gra, so the testing environment is not really authentic, number one. So like maybe some students, and as students age, they kind of understand too more the importance of the assessment. Some students, once they get to fourth, fifth grade, they're like, wow, I can reclassify, you know? Like they think, they, they understand this more. There's a celebration, there's a party, right? So I think it changes too because even, for, for students in their developmental level, a little bit of that. But where were, that 48%, to be honest, our K-two, K-through-five schools are much higher than 48%. They're like hitting it out of the ballpark. Where, what brings our percentage down to 48% unfortunately is our middle school and our high school students. And, and, and that's not because of what's happening or the instruction they're being provided, but it's because they're coming with not the foundational instruction that we've been providing them in Milford Public Schools since kindergarten. They may have some severe, limited education or interrupted education. Or some students we see here in middle school, for example, have been in four different countries in the past three years, being taught under three different languages. And so every time they move to new language, even though they're having full-time education, their access to education has been limited over a time period. And so they're just significantly below and so they're not reading at their grade level peers for that age. And so their progress is very minimal each year and so they're not hitting their targets. We call this students with limited and interrupted formal education and we have many more of those at the middle school and high school, which then drops our, drops our data points. Did that answer your question?
It did, yeah.
Okay.
Like I said, 48% is, it's, it's above the state average, right? And above a lot of our, our, our schools that we're compared to, but it's not even half. So like when you look at it from that part of it.
Yeah.
It's like, well, I, I want, we want 100%, right? And, and, or, and at least be above, way above 50%. So that's why, so to speak to why it's 48% and to fully understand that within that, that other 52% is a, a student, like environment that, that has, they have had a disruptive learning process. And they're older and, and we know that the older you get, it's harder to learn a language, right? As opposed to a, a younger student and when you immerse them in a, in the English language, it's easier, right, to learn or they're probably less, I don't wanna speak to it too, too much, but like they just absorb it more, right?
I think it's also like, you know, that fun adolescence stage.
Yeah.
So yeah, no, so I appreciate you answering that and to, like I said, to understand that 52% and what's within that 52% that we're still working hard to improve that.
I also think it's important to say, like at the middle school and high school students, this is some of the students that will have as long-term Ls. The state has a reclassification criteria of a 4.2, indifferent if you're a student with a disability or not. So indifferent if you have a language disability, you're still taking access and you still need to have a 4.2. The state is working on alternative criteria for reclassifying, reclassifying our students who are duly identified. But many of our students at the middle school who have, are classified as long-term Ls are also students with disabilities because they simply are not able to meet that threshold of 4.2, not because they're not progressing in their language proficiency, but because they've hit possibly a plateau due to whatever their diagnosis is.
Well again, thank you very much for coming in, we appreciate, oh yeah, go ahead.
I don't know, I just thought of this, do students in the night school take access testing on the same timeline?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, curious. Comment on that program from your perspective, because it's been great to hear about.
Well, we've increased the capacity to 35 students and that is, has been successful. It's been able to allow us to take some students who have been having some attendance concerns during the day program and shift them into the night program, obviously with, you know, meetings with parents. And, and so it's not just allowed us to meet our overage, under credited students that are coming in internationally, but also to support our students in district to the day program is, is not the right fit because of maybe some personal obligations of working during the day to provide income to their family. So it's gave, given us the flexibility to support students across newly arrived and current students and what they need in order to keep them in school. So it's been successful in that manner and, and I, you'll see too, I'm not sure, at some point Josh has put forward a proposal of how we can expand a part of the high school and provide hopefully more, hopefully access to licensed, we're having trouble finding licensed biology educators to, to, to work in a stipended position at the high school. So we have not yet been able to provide a licensed biology teacher and because of that inequity he's put, put forward for your review, a proposal of expansion and a way that we might be able to think outside the box to ensure that we have equity and access to licensed educators even in our evening program. And that's specifically to bio.
Yeah, no, it's excellent. I think to Brendan's point, our own accolades, I think it'd be one thing to just be trying to keep up with the volume, but to know that we've also rolled with this program and we're also gonna roll out dual language. It's just really impressive, so thanks for sharing it with us.
Yeah, thank you.
Well again, thank you very much, appreciate the passion behind your, your work with the, the EL department and as Megan and Brendan are saying, growing the, growing the department and the, and the demands. So again, we really appreciate you being here and presenting, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Thanks Craig.
Moving on, our next agenda item will be the community use policy. And this is a second read, we didn't have any edits from the first read. So this will be a vote to implement, assuming no other discussion at this time again, as, as we reviewed it the last time. Anybody last chance to, to look it over and, and talk through it?
I guess that Michael wouldn't show up for his policy.
Wanna say that again loud?
Wasn't a timestamp on that one?
Exactly. So again, this second read, this does require a, a vote. So I'm looking for a motion to implement the community use program policy. And that is file number BDFB. Motion by Brendan, second by Megan, and then that all in favor is unanimous. Great, thank you very much, appreciate that, appreciate everybody's work, especially Michael on that. Uh, we're gonna pass over the high school construction invoice to a later time. So from there, we will move on to the job posting for the school business manager.
So if you wanna go to page 26 in the packet, this is, this is basically the job description that Kathy provided. I made a few changes to it. One is I took out the HR pieces that were highlighted in yellow because it, you know, it looks like we're gonna move forward with the HR director proposal. Two, I, I increased the salary range, but I think that's a, a good discussion point. One of the reasons I, I increased the salary range is I know there's a number of districts out there that are posting these positions. There's not a lot of, there's, there's not a lot of candidates out there. And I've also heard the last couple of years, and I think I've said this at previous meetings, that some districts have had to go out multiple times to, to get a candidate. And I think, you know, if we are competitive from a salary perspective, we're more likely to find, you know, a highly qualified candidate. And the, the last piece that I changed was just reports to the superintendent of the Milford Public Schools, which for some reason was, was blank there. And I'm happy to, you know, answer any questions or respond to anything specific from the posting.
Any questions on?
I did notice, I noticed the salary piece and I know I'm looking at this from a very simplistic level. That's very similar to what we have now of somebody who is both a school business administrator and an assistant superintendent, so. But I'm not, I'm not saying this role is not worth that value, but if somebody doesn't have both, is it generally less of a dollar value?
What I would say is that regardless of what, like, if you looked at the job descriptions I gave you, there's a lot of little funky add-ons based on the district. Sometimes they were overseeing like the preschool program, sometimes they're overseeing, you know, it varied pretty dramatically district to district. What I will say is for somebody who has the core school business administrator license and has done the job somewhere, based on the size of our district, and we're gonna be looking at people within probably a 50 to 60, to 75-minute commute radius. We wanna be competitive so that people are not gonna overlook us because, you know, we're offering something that's significantly less. I think we could put competitive salary commensurate with qualifications and experience and leave it kind of a little more open-ended. My one worry with that is I don't know if people will overlook us because most of the districts in this area, or actually a pretty, a relatively high percentage of districts in this area are small and the job is very different and like a thousand student district or 1,200 student district versus a district with close to 4,600 students. So I think putting like competitive, and maybe we go 155 to 175 or 150 to 175.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, maybe drop it.
Expand, expand the range. I, I think I'd be very comfortable with that. But, but I would wanna put it out there that like if we get a very qualified candidate who's, who's got good experience, we're willing to pay, you know, competitive market value.
I guess rephrasing, again, then really the question I'm asking is more of, are we currently paying for a business administrator and an assistant superintendent? Or is the pay for the current position based on the work which is really what's here?
I would say the second one.
Okay, okay.
You know, when we were, when we were discussing and debating the title, the title's, it's irrelevant and it isn't. I think the super, assistant superintendent has a little more cachet to it. But whether the person's called a school business administrator, any of the supplementary titles that we put out there, the, the salary's gonna drive it more than anything else. And I, I think if we get the right person, we could say, hey, you know, this is something that the committee will work with you on within a year or two, if, you know, ever, you know, things progress in the way we anticipated progressing. We, we could give, grant somebody the title. It's actually much easier to get a superintendent's license than it is a school business administrator license. For, for whatever reason.
Yeah, who knows?
Yeah, but I, but I would say like the core functions of the job is kinda the financial and business functions and, you know, whatever we title it, the salary's gonna be the driver. You know, for some people, we may negotiate on title. You know, and that's, that's something, I think, you know, when you're hiring somebody, everything and nothing's negotiable, but I think, you know, we could, we could really look at that. But yeah, I'd, I'd say it's the function more than the, the title. And, and like I said, there's a lot of different iterations of what people do on these roles, depending on the district. And I think it's kinda like what happened here is we had somebody, somebody left, their responsibilities dispersed over a few people and that, that happens everywhere. Does that answer your question?
It does, yes, and I had another one, but I think the last bullet actually answered my question on that one too, so I think I'm good.
So Matt, I'm sorry, I kind of lost it, Louis, the salary, do you, are we keeping it?
So I would, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go one fifty to one seventy-five.
Yeah, I think expanding, I just, I just don't want to get cornered in a little bit, right, because, I mean, same thing you and I would do, if I see a job posting and you tell me that.
You look at the top number.
Right. Yeah, I'm talking about the top number, not the bottom, but again, if, if they're worth it and we have a lot to deal with, obviously, the investment makes sense.
Right, you know, again, yeah, depending on the experience of that.
Right.
Yeah. Brendan or Megan, or you can, if not, I can have a question, but.
Just one clarification, we, we are gonna keep the number on the listing, correct? I would like to, just be, I think salary transparency is always the best thing to get the process moving forward.
I, I, I think it's a, for this particular position, I think it's a good idea, I think with principal positions, I think it's good to say, you know, regionally competitive or competitive, and they can look at our, you know, and see what other principals are making, get a sense of like where we are market-wise.
Sure.
Um, with this position, I, I think we need to do something that's gonna attract candidates.
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah, I guess my, the reports too, I'd like to see it have, you know, the superintendent and also school committee, I think that having that person report back to us is, is kind of overseers of the budget is just in good business practice for us.
So, I, I, I look at the report to piece as the person that does the evaluation, and I think historically, it's been the superintendent that's on the evaluation of the school business administrator, and I think that's the case in almost every district in Massachusetts.
Okay.
Um, I think that we probably follow the same protocols we do where, you know, the person that replaces Kathy would be here reporting and engaging with the school committee in the same way.
Right, I hope, yeah.
Yeah, I, that, that would be my vision for it.
Okay.
All right.
Can I just add to that one, Chris, because that, that was one of my other questions until I read the line, I'll just read it out loud, that says, performs other duties and assumes such other responsibilities as may be assigned by the school committee and superintendent, so. Second page, bottom bullet, that one in, in my mind, at least for me, solidifies that, like, if there was a budget-related question that we felt like we wanted to directly address with the school business administrator, that that calls out kind of in their responsibilities, yes, we do have to answer that question towards
Right.
the committee, but I would say in terms of the evaluation piece, I don't recall anything that would state that we would evaluate, which is the part that I'm a little lost on personally, in terms of the laws, that we would be evaluating a, a business administrator.
Right.
Yeah.
The, the other piece I would say is, I, I think like how we've been operating is how most districts operate in, in the Commonwealth, I can't say all districts, but it's, it's how most districts operate, that, the, uh, you know, whether it's an assistant superintendent, a school business administrator, one of the other titles that's out there, they work very closely with the school committee in every district because one of the core functions is budget, like you said, Chris.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Uh, just a couple, um, things, Chris, so Kevin, it says supervises all accounting and payroll operations, would we not envision, I'm just trying to think about the payroll and the HR and kind of how you think about that segregation.
There's such a budget function to like, you know, the payroll piece, um, that I think there has to be some engagement, but from this person, I think if you want a language change, I think I'd be definitely open to that, but I think, um, that, I, I think there's gonna be consistent engagement because a lot of the, like eighty percent of our budget is personnel.
Got it, no, I, I definitely.
And, you know, if we have, if we shift reporting requirements, we can always, you know, when we bring the HR person in, I, I, I think that's, but I think there's gonna be a dotted line piece minimally between the, uh, business, the school business administrator and the payroll people because it's such a, it's such a big part of our budget.
Got it, okay. Um, that's helpful, thanks, um. Yeah, I guess that's it, Chris.
No problem, you sure? Take your time.
Mostly.
Take your time, all right, um, Megan, while you're gonna win, I just, I am gonna go back to the reports two side of it. Um, what I wouldn't, I, what I'm gonna do then is just, I'll make a motion then to, to add reports to superintendent slash Milford School Committee, just because I, I'd rather put it as a vote, I know it's my opinion, um, and I want a consensus out there of how everybody's feeling, I know obviously not everybody's here, um, but I feel like in most word to move forward, so I'm gonna motion to add that reports to school committee be added to this. And need a second to move on.
So, so before that goes to second, can I add a little discussion?
Yep, well, we'll second it, we'll see if the second, if, if it gets a second, then we can discuss, if it, there is no second, then it dies on the floor anyways, so, second by Matt. So discussion, go ahead, Dr. McTire.
All right, so I, I had shared with you previously, a document that was, um, published in nineteen ninety-five as a memo from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which was a response to the nineteen ninety-three Education Reform Act, which, there were, there were a number of positions left out of, um, I'm gonna pull it up right now, left out of the, uh, yeah, here they are, here they are, school business administrator, administrator of special education, school physicians, registered nurses, supervisors of attendance and legal counsel, are the groups that were left out, and, and DESI provided guidance around not only like the hiring process, but also kind of the supervision process, and I, 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 I think we're going, I don't wanna say far afield, but I think we're moving in a direction that was, was not the intent of the nineteen ninety-three Education Reform Act, which shifted kind of the hiring responsibility from school committees to the, um, you know, building principals and the superintendent, basically. Um, I can read it, I can share it with you, um, but, but I think it kind of like the spirit of it is, is that the person, kind of like how we've been operating, they, they work with the school committee directly, but they don't necessarily like report to the school committee, just like a principal doesn't report to the school committee. Yeah, or a teacher.
So the only thing that I'll, I'll add to that, because after you sent that last time, I did look it up too, and the piece that you sent us was DESI's position or their opinion on that, just a paragraph or two before that, they outright noted that the Mass General laws put those five positions under the hiring jurisdiction of the school committee, this is where I'm still very great, because it talks about the hiring piece.
Right.
It doesn't say anything further, like it does for the superintendent about how we have to evaluate the superintendent, it says nothing further about the evaluations of any of those positions, so. Uh, to me, it's just words, right, if you say reports to the superintendent of schools and Milford School Committee, I personally don't see that as any different, but I do think that if we were to do that, we should put something in there that does outright state that the evaluation and the day-to-day operation of the position is reporting to the superintendent, because I, I would not want to see a situation where this person is sitting there going, who's this question go to?
Right.
Right, and for us, as volunteers and as people who are not always readily available, do we want extra phone calls and, and I, I don't, I don't see it happening this way, but I'm trying to think of a, the potential people that we bring in, it, it could cause delays or potential confusion on what to do. But like I said, for me, it's just words too, so I could see it go either way, and I don't see any guidance in the laws, so I'm not really sure.
Yeah, no, that, and I think that's a valid point, you said that, and I, I don't, my motion wasn't to intend it from a, a day-to-day operational standpoint, it was just more, again, back to that, kind of that dotted line, um, statement that we're saying already, that as, as overseers of, of the budget, that I'd like to see that, again, that dotted line, that obviously, that, that the individual works, you know, in a day-to-day basis with the superintendent, but again, having that somewhat type, I'm looking to have that connection to school committee.
Is it something that we add in the responsibilities, and I'm trying to scan really quickly to see if I'm missing it, but you'll just tell me if I did. Uh, something that we potentially add in there that just outright calls, um, the direct work with the school committee and all budget-related items, is it, is it as simple as just saying, you know, responds to and reports to the school committee and all budget-related?
Yeah, uh, yeah, if I don't, let, let me jump in here, keeps the school committee and superintendent informed and works co, uh, cooperatively with all other administrators, so, so keeps the school committee and superintendent informed, right, so second to last bullet.
I would actually go to the fourth bullet, Chris, I actually think it's probably, to the extent we're talking budget, it almost feels like it's a better home up there from my perspective, and maybe we could just elaborate it to what Matt was alluding to, to add a couple of words.
Okay. Yep.
So like, there's the development and preparation of the budget, right, but then there's like the ongoing maintenance, which is like a critical piece
Right.
that we're, you know, readily involved in, so maybe it's just enhancing that one a little bit.
Okay. Yeah.
That makes sense.
Anybody have words, a worse method?
I'm the worst, I'm, you don't want me to do it.
Can you repeat what you said, Matt?
I probably can't.
Yes, you can. You can try.
Um, I'm, I'm, so I'm curious if it's just a different wording that would specify a reporting to the school committee, um, with budget-related something.
How about reports?
Provides regular reports and updates to the school committee and is responsive to school committee questions related to budget and expenditure or something like that.
Something like that would be good.
That works.
They're just.
See, that's what I mean, it's a good thing this is recorded, what time, it's, uh, it's eight o'clock, just in case we have to watch it back.
Exactly. And I guess, and to go back then to maybe answer the question of looking at why or why not have the reports too.
Sure.
Technically, right now, we as the committee should funnel everything through the superintendent, now, we all have a good work, working relationship with Kathy, so I feel like we can contact her. I just want, I guess, to make sure that the, that new person that comes in doesn't have a wall up
I see what you mean.
when we call to ask for a question, that could happen, right, so that, that, I guess, would be my dotted line by saying reports too, so just giving us the ability to communicate with that person if we have questions.
Got it.
So.
I just, I just don't know if that structure exists anywhere else.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it could be as simple as just, e- even in that statement, be, you know, being, having a statement in there or part of the statement saying something about being, being, um, responsive
Right.
to school committee, um, needs and questions on budgetary and stuff like that.
So here's what I've got, provides regular updates on budget and expenditures, responds to school com, just let me see, school committee questions and
Inquiry.
Inquiries related to budget, spending and expenditures. Does that cover everything?
Yeah, that sounds, I think so.
If I turn that into a full sentence, does that work?
Uh, yeah.
That's, yeah, that's the, the understanding of what, yeah, I think, I would like.
Because I, I hear what you're saying, Chris, I, I really do, even though I'm disagreeing with you, I hear what you're saying.
Right, a- and again, it's not, I'm not looking at it from a standpoint of having to add an additional, um, you know, evaluation to us, I'm just trying to.
You want accessibility.
Accessibility, exactly, yep, yep, just from the accessibility standpoint.
And I'll include that word in the sentence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yes.
So maybe a second piece, Chris, in my mind of what you were getting at, was then to also talking, and maybe we're gonna go into this next, Kevin, sort of what we envision the hiring process be, because that to me is also a critical piece of this.
We'll get to that, yeah, exactly, yeah, definitely, that's next, next item on the list, so.
I guess just to re, just to wrap this piece up to just kind of painting an example, right, if we were to perhaps go and say, you know, in our budget updates once a month, instead of giving us seventy-five pages in a PDF, can you give us a high-level report with only pulling out critical areas, you know, to be able to ask for that adjustment, rather than, and, and as you said, to have somebody go, well,
On sand.
I'm doing, yeah, but yeah, basically, I'm doing it the way I'm doing it, or I'm doing, you know, I'm still hopeful that we have somebody, we get somebody like Kathy that understands, and if we have somebody with experience, my guess is, as you're stating, they're, they've, they've done this dance before, um, and they're receptive, but I do think it's important to kind of nail it down a little bit.
Okay. Of course you can.
Is the, is it anticipated, Kevin, so it says they'll supervise all accounting? Will they supervise any other positions, is that clear?
So.
Or is that unknown right now?
Right now Kathy kind of oversees the folks in, in the central office minus Melissa, I believe.
Yep.
Um, I, I think we'll have to look at that when we bring the HR person on, because I think, um, like, there's a couple of positions that probably make sense to stay under the school business administrator role, and a couple of positions that would fall under the HR role.
Okay.
Like, uh, Carol Now was like an HR, what's, what's her official title?
I'm not sure.
It's, it's HR, like.
Sure.
Assistant administrator or support.
But facilities and community use.
So, yeah, and that's something we talk about, and, and I think, you know, just based on the experiences of the last couple of years, I think having facilities directly report to the superintendent is probably a good move, and then explicitly saying the community use and transportation reports to the superintendent is probably a good move.
Okay, thanks, that's helpful. Thanks, Chris.
No problem. So, for the, the formality of all, I do have the motion on the table, there is a second, and that motion was to add school committee to, as an additional report to, um, so looking to, um, for the vote on that, so the all in favor on that one, so one in favor and then three, well, and then opposed, so just for formality, all right, and then three opposed, all right, so from there.
But I will add that sentence that we just talked about.
Correct, so, yeah, and then to make, you know, this official so we can move forward, um, you know, let's, let's vote to approve this job posting so we can get things, this, this moving, I'd rather not push it to the next meeting, um, so I, I believe the, some of the edits, um, the, the salary will now be from one fifty to one seventy-five, and you have the verbiage to add to that.
Yeah, can I, want me to read it one more time?
Sure, go ahead.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna wordsmith it a little bit, but I'm gonna keep the spirit of what I've got here.
Sure, yeah.
Provides regular updates on budget and expenditures, responds to school committee questions and inquiries related to budget, spending and expenditures, and I'm gonna add something about accessibility to school committee too.
Okay.
I just, I, I can't formulate a phrase, but, but I'll put that in there, to, to just kind of like, to get to your concern, Chris, about will the person be responsive if we have questions?
Correct, exactly, yeah.
Which is very, seems very reasonable.
Yeah, so looking for a motion to, um, accept this job posting with those defined edits, so, motion by Brendan, second by Matt, all in favor, and that is unanimous, excellent. So, moving on to the, so we'll just start, yeah, kind of from a higher level discussion of the interview process, I want to put this on there just to get feedback from our, um, our committee members, Dr. McIntyre, if you have
Yeah.
something first to add to it, what you feel like, and then we can have the committee members chime in.
So, I'm gonna pass this sheet out, and it's, it's a draft, obviously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
So, I'd like to do a process that's heavily school committee involved, and I think I'd look to you to see if you'd want consistent individuals participating or different school committee members participating throughout the process, but I, but I see a screening committee where there's one school committee member, I'd like to get one member from the business and finance team over at town halls, because, you know, this person and Kathy works very closely with them, um, and they have kind of that accounting and, you know, kind of municipal background too. Um, assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction and the superintendent to do, to, to screen, to screen applications. Um, I don't want to set any unrealistic expectations, we may get three applicants, I don't think we're gonna get fifty or sixty. I'd love to get, you know, somewhere between fifteen and twenty, that'd be great, I don't know if that's gonna happen, just based on what I'm hearing around the state. So I don't know if like, there's gonna be a real deep dive, I think what they'll determine is, do we need to go back out to get a deeper pool, or do we move forward with the candidates we get, is really gonna be the question. Um, have, have an interview committee that's, um, that basically brings the stakeholders that the person works directly with, two to three school committee members, again, a representative from the town business and finance team, a representative from the finance committee, the facility director, community use and transportation director, which we may decide to take them off if we're, we're shifting, you know, reporting responsibilities, but they do a lot, like, I would say the facility director does a lot of work around procurement with, um, you know, and will continue to do that and around like budget, um, maybe not so much transportation, two to three school administrators or department heads, again, they work very closely with that position, a member of the central office team, meaning the folks, uh, that currently, currently report to Kathy, so we have some representation, so they have a voice in the process, again, Craig and myself. And then that group, ideally we have, you know, a robust group we're interviewing, they'll send, you know, ideally two to three finalists to, for a second interview, where we'll bring in two to three school committee members and the superintendent, and we'll decide on a final candidate and then do a pretty robust reference check. And so the goal here is, I think, to keep the spirit of what's in the DESI guidance, but have heavily, heavy involvement by the school committee throughout the process, so there's a real school committee voice, because again, it's, I think it's one of the three key positions that you're interacting with on a regular basis.
Questions, comments, go ahead, Megan.
I have one, Kevin, and I apologize, I didn't think about this when we were looking at the job posting, and I know this is probably unusual, but it would be worthwhile, I don't know if it's possible to actually like have the hire start in May and have some overlap with Kathy?
So I think Kathy's leaving sometime in the summer, so I think if we start somebody in July or even June, there's gonna be, you know, four or five weeks potentially of overlap.
Okay, I feel like it'd be good to have that confirmed, otherwise I would like to see us move up the start date to the extent they'd be willing to do that.
Yeah, I think the one tricky thing with getting an experienced person is.
A hundred percent, they're gonna wanna finish the year, yeah.
So it's, it's possible.
Okay. I'd support incentivizing that, if there's a way for us to do that, is all I was gonna say.
Yeah, I, I think that's something we could look at as we kind of, it is a great idea.
Or is it keeping, trying to keep Kathy on?
Incentivizing one way or the other, Chris, right, to someone to have overlap so that it's easier to.
Yeah, but if we bring someone inexperienced, I think there's, there's certain things we do in Milford that are specific to Milford, but I would say a large percentage of, like, you know, the chart of accounts and other things we're working with will be, you know, similar. And, you know, that's if we get somebody who's experienced.
Sure.
But I think it's a great idea.
So this is really more for my own clarity of thinking. So when you hire superintendent, when you went through that, were all of your interviews with a full committee in public forum?
I was appointed at the school committee meeting, so I didn't go through the process.
Okay.
So what a typical, what a typical, like, a superintendent hire will be is there's a screening committee that goes through the applications like I have here, and they make recommendations for interviews. There's an interview committee that has, like, you know, a variety of stakeholders. And I think for superintendents, a little broader, usually have, you know, student reps, some parent reps, you know, some different people from, like, the town. Sometimes, you know, I've seen everything from police chiefs or fire chiefs to, you know, town managers that sit on those committees. But it's, it's a broad stakeholder group. And then there's, you know, depending on how people move forward, there's either, you know, another round of interviewing. There, you know, people spend a day in the district. You know, they go on site visits, which you really don't see for business managers so much, but you do see sometimes. And the joke I have about site visits is if they like you, they're supportive, and if they really wanna get rid of you, they're really supportive. So, you know, I, I think it's a little different, but that's, that's kind of the, that's kind of the superintendent process. What I'd like to say explicitly, cause I think you get more applicants, is we would only announce who we're offering the job to, not finalists. Because I think that increases the likelihood of, you know, someone who's maybe kicking the tires but doesn't wanna go public if they don't get the job.
Yeah, and I, and I ask because obviously, again, going back to the, the law says that the hire is that of the school committees, but it doesn't. What I didn't understand was how the process worked, and in my head, it would not be a good idea to do that in public because now you're really making it a show and less of an actual, real discussion, so.
Which is what the superintendent process is.
Right, right, and that's what, that's what I don't want. And, and obviously, again, just kind of thinking back to the law, the, the law says the final decision is the school committees. But this makeup makes sense to me, whether it's two to three and then go through the whole thing, or, you know, if four or five of us wanna be involved, then we're splitting up duties, so everybody has some sayings and insights, I would assume, right?
Yeah.
Cause the idea here, obviously, is everybody sitting in this room is gonna have an opinion on this because this is an important position, so.
Process that's good to me, Chris.
Yeah, definitely. So I guess on that, Matt, you're saying from the second interview committee side, though, you're looking for?
I was just curious if, normally, when it's a, when it's a committee hire, if everyone is involved from the beginning. But obviously, because of open meeting, you can't do that, and I wouldn't want to do that.
Yeah, and that was my only thought was, you know, the one school committee member during the screening process. If, if we have multiple committee members that wanna be a part of it, I think that.
I, I think that's fine.
Allow to open that up.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
As you stated, there may only be.
Right.
Five.
That's why, that's why I put one, that's why I put one there, because I don't know if there's gonna be a lot of heavy lifting, a lot of deep discussion.
Yeah, and, and I don't wanna restrict it from, from my side to, to say, alright, it can, it's only gonna be Megan, even though Matt wanted to be a part of it, right? So to keep it open, I think that to allow almost any committee members to be a part of it, the screening process start consistently.
I was just gonna make a comment to Matt, could you just post it as a meeting and say that?
Yeah, sure, yeah, it doesn't have to be on TV.
Yeah, yeah. And that's what I'm hoping to, that, you know, to, it is an interview, to be a little bit, a little bit more private. Overall, I think is in the best interest of the candidate.
It doesn't have to be on TV, it's just that you're posting it.
That's why I recommend three candidates to participate, you know, three, actually, three, three school committees. Brendan, go ahead, I'll say.
Yeah.
Barely.
Yeah, well, and even on the interview committee, right. The interview committee.
It's a reflection on both of them.
Could consist. The interview committee can, could consist of two groups of three. If, you know, and obviously, there might be one, one person. Oh, so we could kind of, we've done that process before.
One hundred percent.
Two different rooms going, depending on the candidate pool and things like that. So again, I feel like we can still maximize the committee involvement. And it, it will be dependent on, I think, the schedule too, of the committee members. So I don't wanna restrict us, but I wanna at least keep it open enough that if all seven of us want to, to participate, then we all have that option, especially from the, the second interview committee.
Interview committee side. The only thing I would do is I would confer with Jerry or Brian.
Yeah, just.
Right.
Where does, where does, like, deliberation happen? And maybe if the three deliberate and the other three deliberate and say, hey, this is the, like, this is how we rank the candidates. I, I don't know if that's a violation.
We can check them, yeah.
That'd be my only concern.
Yeah, that's, that's a phone call that I can make first thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, let me ask this question as part of your question to them. Is it, this is a contracted position? This is not gonna be an employee at will position?
Yeah, it's, it's typically, like, I, I think we have a hard time hiring somebody as an employee.
Yeah, yeah, for this position, that would make sense. In that, in that sense, our contract, I know contract negotiations can be executive session, but our contract discussions like that, is that technically not an open meeting thing? Just curious to add to your discussion with them.
I'll ask the question.
If that's, if that's, if that's what it ends up being, if there's three people and now we have to decide, you know, the contract status of one of these three people, maybe that's really what it is. It's a contract discussion that.
You're, goes into executive.
Just a thought for you to hand over.
Add that question to the, to the list.
Okay. Alright. Any other questions on that? Like I said, just trying to get an overview of it, get, at least get the job posted.
Yep, and so some iteration of this seems acceptable, is what we're kinda.
Exactly, like I said, yeah, from my side of it, just is keeping it as, as, as broad as possible for the, the committee members that are going to wanna be involved in this process.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's, that's, that's very reasonable. Alright, so once you get those questions answered, you and I will confer, and then we'll set up like a, a calendar.
Exactly.
Alright, perfect.
Sounds good.
Kevin, when will you have it closed? I'm just curious.
I'm gonna talk to a few people who've recently posted and get a sense of what they've done. I mean, you can go two weeks, you can go a month.
Two weeks feels tight.
Yeah.
With facilities, you, you went a certain date, but you shut it down early because we had just an influx of, of applicants. I know that didn't necessarily work out in our favor, but.
I, I can't remember exactly what I, honestly, what we did there.
Are you allowed to do that? Can you say, here's a month, and then if you get fifty in two weeks, like, we're done?
We could say that, you know, we'll, but again, the process we're gonna follow, we really need to kind of get a group to, like, the group of applicants together and go through. We're not gonna, taking people individually as they come in, per se. Cause some, some places will say, you know, open until filled. And, you know, they'll interview, they'll do, they'll do a process as they, as they go through. And I've seen that, and, you know, a lot of different sectors will do that sometimes. Because, like, if you get a great candidate, you just scoop them off.
Sure.
But I think we wanna follow, like, again, it's typical to follow a process. I think if we say we're not gonna, the only person we're gonna reveal is the person we offer the position to. I think that's gonna maybe put some more people into the pool that may not jump in otherwise, unless the risk goes down for them professionally.
Where does one advertise that, Kevin? In the posting itself?
So we, we put it on, we put it on School Spring, we put it out on social media, we put it on, I think it's Masbo, which is the Business Administrators Association, we put it on their listserv.
Sorry, I meant more specifically that language would be included.
Yeah, would be included in the job, in the job, we put in the job posting description, yeah.
Two weeks just feels tight from my perspective, Chris, but.
Same, yeah, I'm thinking the same, that.
Just offer that.
Yeah, we can open it up for the month, but.
Could you always expand it? You just said three weeks, and then.
You know, I think, again, I think if we go three or four weeks, I think that's fine. I'm just very sensitive to, like, we're, we're out there competing with other, other folks, we're a very, a very limited pool of candidates.
Yeah, and I would hope that if the, if, if a good candidate comes across, we can reach out to that person just and, and have them fully understand, like, hey, listen, we, we still have another two, three weeks of, of time. But we, we would be interested in, in having you come in, just we have to wait through that process before we can close it off.
And just say it to everyone just for.
Right, well, that too. Yeah, to make sure.
And I'm sure if you have an all-star candidate walk through and you're like, I don't know how this person ended up on my table, but perhaps that's a, I'm grabbing three or four people and we're having a first interview right now to see if this person's worth just shoving through ahead of time. Right, but I understand that the idea of the process, you don't wanna sit here and be like, oh, I got one, let's have a discussion.
Well, plus it's hard to get the whole group together.
How do you get everybody together, but?
That's the challenge.
Perhaps there's, you know.
Cause if you want, like, stakeholder input, and I know, like, I, I think just how you guys feel passionately about it, you know, the principals and department heads who work, you know, shoulder to shoulder with this person also wanna, you know, probably put some feedback in too.
Well, we'll at least get that job posted, we can kind of, we've got a, I guess, like, a framework for the, the interview process, you know, which is good. And, you know, if we, we kind of, it's only a framework, it's not like it, it can't be modified a little bit depending on involvement.
Sure.
Yeah, so I can get the answers to those questions from either Jerry or Brian.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
And then based on that, what kind of structure?
Structure, yeah, sounds good. Alright, any other questions on that?
We're good.
So moving on.
Alright, perfect.
Thank you.
So the next one is the enrollment update?
Enrollment update, yes. So you got a little preview from Jen, or do you?
Yeah.
On some of the enrollment pieces. This is pretty straightforward. Ah, let me just pull my notes up, give me one second. Alright, so we currently have four thousand five hundred and forty-nine students enrolled in the Milford Public Schools. Sixty-eight point six percent of our student population is considered high needs. A student is considered high needs if they're categorized in one or more of the following ways: a student with special needs, an English learner, or economically disadvantaged. You know, you saw Jen's presentation earlier, and we have, you know, a lot of students who are English learners and students with disabilities. The student population has been relatively stable this year, but as we know, it can shift at any time. We currently have eleven students pending on the FRC log, and we've enrolled thirty-five students so far in January. The Family Resource Center has enrolled about four hundred and fifty students since July, which is above last year's pace, but below the year before's pace. So we're, we're probably not gonna come in at the highest, we're probably gonna come in at, like, somewhere in the middle. Like, I'm guessing, like, you know, them registering somewhere between, like, five twenty-five and maybe six hundred students, give or take. Where the, I think our high mark was like seven seventy-four two years ago. Happy to answer any questions. This just broadly gives you the enrollment, the high, the high needs of the particular building or program or school, and the percentage of high needs students, just so you get a sense of kind of the lay to land, you know, kind of broadly. And like, like I said, we've been very stable for about fourteen months, fifteen months now. And, you know, we have students coming in all the time, but we also have students leaving all the time, which is why the numbers are stable.
Questions? Go ahead, Brendan.
Yeah, the only question, comment, in the future, can we have, like, another column of just, like, percent change year over year? Like, two or three years out? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that's something I could do.
Yeah, it's just, that's just more just.
Yeah, I, I think we could look at that.
I just like data.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, there's a lot of ways, there's a lot of ways to look at this.
For sure.
Right. And are you looking at it from a collective standpoint?
Just like, if it's a trend, like, you know, like, especially in the high needs part of it, is that trend?
So a high, so our, although our population is stable, our high needs percentage continues to go up. So I think if you're like, if, if it were a graph that you'd see, and this were like, like, let's say a seven or eight year graph, you'd see the population going like this. And kind of flattening for the last, like, eighteen months. And high needs kind of like, almost like that little guy climbing the mountain in The Price is Right. You know, it's, it's, it's slowly, slowly increasing.
I will say, just, sorry, just from memory, Brendan, I wanna say that just three years ago, high needs was somewhere in the fifty-six to sixty percent range.
That's.
Okay.
So in just three years, it's gone up almost ten.
Yep, and that's been consistent, that, that's consistently kind of moved up. And, you know, I think you saw this earlier.
Sure, sure.
I was gonna say this morning, it was a while earlier, just the trending with the yield, you know, percentages and numbers.
I think to Brendan's point, from the percentage, also just to see, kind of the percentage increases at the, at the, each, each grade level or each school, you know, obviously Brookside's gonna see a little bit of a spike because of the, the shift in the, but, the more space. But to fully understand what we're seeing down at the, I guess, you know, the, the K-one-two level. And are we all set right now with the six additional classrooms? Or do we see some trends that we need to look at that is, that we're seeing younger families move in that are gonna cause a spike at that K-one-two level? So, and what we need to do from a capital standpoint to offset that, so, I think, yeah, there's, there's ways of breaking it down.
The district one, I know I can do easily, I'm pretty sure I can do the school one easily too. But I think we can break it down by, like, you know that one table that Jen showed with, like, the five categories? I think I could probably do that by school and by year, and put something together that would give you, I think, a good sense of where things are trending. And I've, I've done that, I think, what we used to do is we used to do comparisons between our town and other, other towns, and we'd break it down in a lot of different ways.
Sure.
But this is, I think, something we could, I could probably just give you, like, in the next couple of meetings.
Yeah.
And I don't think it would take a, a lot of time. And it's interesting.
It is interesting.
And it also informs, like, why we've made a lot of the requests we've made over the last several years still. From a budgetary perspective.
Megan, go ahead.
Kevin, I'm just curious, which is the largest grade right now?
Give me one second, I can answer that question. I think, I think I've got it right here. I gotta put my glasses on.
I feel like I wanna guess it's the junior grade.
The high school is what I think.
High school sophomore, junior's really high.
Freshman year, a couple of years ago, the freshman number was massive.
Really?
What's second grade?
You got it, Craig?
Yeah, three fifty.
Okay, there you go.
But first grade's three forty-four, second grade, no, third grade's three forty-four.
Eighth is three forty-six.
Yeah.
Okay, that's awful.
Tenth is three forty, so there's a lot of grades that are, like, in that, you know.
And you, and you lose kids to BBT.
That must have been, that must have been what it was, because it was like eighth or ninth was like, way up there, like, almost three seventy-five, three eighty at one point.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's a, that's a, a decision point for people where they'll, you know, go to some private schools and go to BBT, which knocks the numbers down a little bit.
Thanks, that's awful.
Any other questions on the enrollment? Not seeing any, so, very good, thank you for that. Moving on, the spring and summer staff recruitment update?
Just one, one thing, Chris.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. You all still have the access to open access? And you can, you can look at it.
That's fair.
That's a, that's a great point. There's a lot of, there's a lot of interesting things you can play around with on that, related to, like.
But it's, it's only this current data right now, so I'm gonna work with them and see if they can get us.
Some historical.
Years, yeah, that'd be great.
It's a really good tool, though, you can see so much in there.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you on that. Alright.
Alright, so, again, we plan to actively and aggressively recruit for open staff positions and anticipated staff positions this spring and well into summer. We are currently scheduled to attend career fairs at Merk, excuse me, Bridgewater State, the Harvard Graduate School of Education, UMass Boston, I believe Stonehill as well, and we're gonna host a regional career fair, which we've done for the past couple of years, at Milford High School, that includes surrounding districts from the Blackstone Valley. We've attended several events through Mass Hire this year and hosted local Milford career fairs, and both of those have been very successful, particularly around, like, teaching assistants, behavioral assistants, cafeteria staff. Hiring each year has become more challenging because fewer students are enrolling in undergraduate or graduate teacher education programs. And I know I sound like a broken record, but it's, it's hitting crisis levels now. And the other trend we're seeing is educators are leaving the profession in higher numbers than, than they have previous to the pandemic. So fewer people are going in, more people are leaving, and this has created an increased competition for talent. I was at a legislative event for the Worcester County Superintendents, and I actually spoke about chronic absenteeism as one of the four big issues, but the other thing that really came up that everybody was talking about was just staffing. Is that everybody's struggling to staff the positions that they have. You know, Craig had a theory about, you know, the ASR money is gonna, like, is, is winding down, and that might open up a number of candidates because districts' mobile is sustained, and I think that's a possibility. But I think it's gonna be a short-term bump, and you're gonna go back to, you know, really, it, it's, it's been a struggle. And I, I think, you know, I talked about the school business manager position, but if we have, you know, science openings at the secondary level, mathematics openings, world language, EL, special education, you know, you're almost like, if I meet somebody who has one of those things, I'm like, how you doing? Because you just don't, there's just not a lot of those folks out there. And we've gotten very creative with connecting, you know, pro, we've got a number of folks who are going through programs right now, through grants, to get different licenses, and that's gonna help. But this is gonna get, I think, worse until we figure something out, and I'm not sure what that is. And it's not gonna be something that Milford figures out, it's gotta be something that happens on a, on a broader scale, both at the state level and, and the national level. Because we're just not seeing people entering teaching like we did in the past. And my son's a special education teacher, and, you know, he runs, he, he meets a principal or somebody that I, you know, know. And they're like, hey, you know, are you happy where you are? Because everybody's just dying for can.
Because everybody's just dying for candidates, they're just dying for candidates, so we're gonna continue to be creative, aggressive. Our retention numbers are very good, which is, which is encouraging, but I think as we, you know, hire folks on emergency licenses, and folks that, you know. Who are on maybe a license for five years, cause they, they passed the required tests, we're, I think we're gonna see higher attrition rates with those folks, so they don't have the same level of training that somebody who went through an undergraduate or graduate program of education did. And I think, you know, some of the struggles are a little more, it's, it's tough to be a first-year teacher anywhere with the best preparation. With less than the best preparation, it's even more challenging, so, again, we're gonna continue to get out there and follow every avenue we can to find, you know, the best possible teachers in locally. You know, we all have great networks, and we all leverage those networks to try to find people, but it's gonna get, it's, it's, every year it's gotten tougher, and I anticipate this being the hardest year we've had in the last like seven or eight years, so, to find people.
Questions or comments? The subject matter, not seeing any? Well, alright then. We'll move on to the business administrator report, but I believe, Craig, you're gonna take care of that?
I will. Alright, you have in front of you seven warrants for your approval in total of one million two hundred eighty-nine thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. That requires a vote.
Alright, motion to approve the warrant, motion by Matt, second by Brendan, all in favor, that is unanimous.
You also have a budget update. I don't think it's quite as long as what Matt said.
Not this time.
Also, there's a vote for the professional development.
Yep, so, yeah, looking for a motion to accept the professional development. Motion by Matt, second by Megan, all in favor, that is unanimous.
You have a personnel update in front of you, and then?
Those are required there.
No vote, right, and then you do have some gifts in front of you, Chris, that require a vote?
Yes. Sure, it's like we have three gifts. The first one, the donor is the Educational Development Center. The amount is for six hundred and ninety dollars. The purpose of this, or the use for this, will be the HQIM math thank you gifts. Can you speak to that a little bit, what that program is?
That's, we do programs on vacation, vacation weeks, and we incentivize the, the students for coming. We can't use grant funds to do that, so we look for donations.
Excellent, so we appreciate that from the Educational Development Center. The next one, the donor is the Woodland Elementary PTO. The purpose of this gift, gift will be for books, and the amount is two thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars and three cents. So, obviously very self-explanatory there, appreciate the, all the efforts from the Woodland Elementary PTO. And then our third gift is from Maine Drilling and Blasting. The purpose will be for the Memorial Elementary School Holiday Drive, and this will be in the amount of one thousand dollars. Any details to that, what the Memorial Elementary School Holiday Drive is, or not sure?
No, I'm not sure, I speculate that it's clothing, food.
No, actually. Yeah, it doesn't specify, but again, we thank Maine Drilling and Blasting for that. So, looking for a motion to accept these three gifts. Motion by Megan, second by Brendan, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Thank you for that.
And then there is some grants that are in need of your vote.
Yes.
I guess the highlighted ones?
Yeah, let me get to it last night.
It's on page fifty-eight.
Yes, yeah, so these are, yeah, we didn't vote any in December, cause of the meeting, so. There are, there's a Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, a early child ed IDEA, and a Perkins. So we have those grants, so looking for a motion to accept those grants as specified in our, in our packet. So, motion by Brendan, second by Megan, all in favor, and that is unanimous. And then the January twenty twenty-four grants, a teacher diversification grant, an IEP improvement grant, and a chronic absenteeism grant. So we appreciate all the hard work from our grant department, and so looking for a motion to accept those grants that were from January of twenty twenty-four. Motion by Matt, second by Megan, all in favor, and that is unanimous.
That's all we have for you.
Excellent, thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you for filling in. Subcommittee updates, any subcommittees that had occurred over the, since the last meeting, a couple weeks ago? Seeing any, I know we had.
We, I don't know the timing if we've met.
I think we, I think we did the update on the Labor Management Group last time.
Yeah.
I believe.
And it was, it wasn't much, there wasn't any huge issues, I would say, you know, just a lot of things that I think just can be, can be handled from a, a day-to-day standpoint, and just trying to, to work with our, all the groups involved. From when I got out of that, yeah.
No, but it's a good conversation with that.
Yep.
Representatives from each of the schools.
Remind me, that's the one that came about after negotiations.
Correct, it's kind of a compilation of three or four other committees, which has, which has actually worked out pretty well so far.
Yeah, alright, so. Future agenda items, anything on the future agenda items front? Not seeing any? So that moves us on to adjournments, and we will be going into executive session, so at this time, we'll be ending our open session of our meeting to enter executive session. Where we will be discussing and getting an update on the ASME negotiations. This requires a roll call vote, and also to note that we will not be returning to open session. So, roll call vote, start over with Brendan.
Yes.
Yes, Megan, yes, Matt, yes, and I am also a yes. Thank you, everybody, and have a good night.